This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 29th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Gregory West of the Rehobah Baptist Church. And remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence following the pledge.
Would you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and lovely Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings, our substance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so when you're boundless from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for the Assembly of Council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflict and the interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace, personal peace in their lives, enjoying their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and working around our beloved city of Mobile. It is in your most blessed Son Jesus' name I pray.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would, please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. I know you all have seen and heard the news reports about what is happening to our neighbors in the Houston area. So if you would, in your own way, please remember the victims of the storm and also the rescuers who were trying to save as many people as possible in the Houston area. So again, in your own way, a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
Roll call, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you here. Our council rules are very simple. We just ask everyone to please turn off your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, you will have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's your indication that it's time to begin wrapping up your comments. Give us your name and address for the record, and if you do have any questions or concerns, please address those to me. I'm the chair, and I will ask the appropriate member of the administrative staff or the council to address those concerns at that time. We mentioned the disaster in Houston caused by Hurricane Harvey. We spoke a little bit about that this morning. I know many, many people in this area are very concerned and would like to do something to help, and you're looking for the most appropriate way to help. A lot of our media partners have lists on their website or Facebook to places where you can make donations and the supplies that may be needed, so I would ask for you to look at their websites. We are also putting together on our city council Facebook page a list of supplies that are needed and places where you can make donations. I also understand that WKRG has a telethon tomorrow morning from 5 until 8 that you can call in and contribute cash to the rescue efforts in Houston. So please just look and find a way that you can help, because we know that one day going forward, we could use that same kind of help, and we're all neighbors, and we all want to do our best to help each other out in this time of need. So please take advantage of those different social media outlets to find what you can do to be a part of it. With that, I will turn it back over to Ms. Lambert. Thank you.
Approval of minutes of August 23rd.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office.
The mayor is otherwise engaged, but sends his greetings.
Okay, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Summo.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of noise ordinance on October 14th on South Reed Avenue, September 30th at the Gulf Coast Explorium, September 3rd, Dawes Lake Road North, September 4th on Foster Lane.
Summo.
Second.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Village of Spring Hill regulating plan to change the regulating subdistricts from Neighborhood Center and Neighborhood General to Neighborhood Center for property located at 406 and 456 North McGregor Avenue and 3772 and 3774 Shipes Lane, northeast corner of North McGregor Avenue and Shipes Lane.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
TJ Lyon, Lyon Law Firm, 3601 Spring Hill Business Park for Mr. Quinelli, the developer. This rezoning was approved by the planning commission, and it is necessary to rezone to a single subdistrict village center. It's recommended, of course, by the planning staff. It's one lot, one acre. I have handed out a folder for you. It shows that the proposed rezoning would allow one building across the front consistent with the Spring Hill Village concept where the buildings are up front, the parking is in back, to implement the vision of the city, to promote walking access to the community for neighborhood businesses and services. And my client bought three properties which were for sale and is going to build that single. There is a, if you've been down at the Roundabout and on McGregor, you'll see a single blue building. What is going to be attached to that as one building will be another six suites, so there will be seven suites in a row for the uses that are permitted, such as barbershop, professional, could be a restaurant, number of uses that would be potentially in that building. You can see that the properties that were purchased were in bad shape. It was a crime area. There was actually a drug takedown the very day my client bought one of the properties. And the site, he has spent, he has donated to the city now on this site 50 feet to the city for parking, installed sidewalks and three streetlights to the city at no cost, which is about $30,000. And most importantly about this, usually you don't see a developer who puts his money where he lives, and if you go down Shipes Lane halfway down the block, that's where Mr. Quinelli lives. So if this were bad for the neighborhood, I would submit to you that he would not invest and do this where he lives. But the neighborhood has changed. It's surrounded by west and north, by commercial businesses, B2, a very large portion on the corner of Spring Hill, and McGregor is B2, which is, could be used for any number of things, gas station, convenience store, all of the B2 uses. Clark Gear and Latham Engineers across the street, you have the Swim Club, you have Sheridan Construction, you have the National Guard Armory. So we're not trying to keep anybody out of their homes. We just believe that the property is now suitable for what was envisioned by the city in adopting the Spring Hill, Village of Spring Hill concept. This will allow the people to walk and work and shop throughout this village. This is the first of, and Linda St. John will speak to that, who's head of the village, but it's the first project that has been developed since it was implemented 12 years ago. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Lyon while he is at the podium? Thank you very much. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
Linda St. John, 320 Avalon Street. I'm president of the Village of Spring Hill and have been for 11 years. When we first took this application to the planning commission, a few weeks ago, there was a question about how inclusive the Village of Spring Hill planning process was, so I'd like to speak to that first. When we started the Village of Spring Hill, I'm going to show my age a little bit here. There was no texting, there was no social media. The only people who did email were really professionals, people who stayed at home or whatever, didn't even really do email. Most people back then got their information from the newspaper, and it was well read at that time, and TV. So the only avenue we had to advertise what we were doing is we put illegal signs on City Right of Way. We put yard signs out, we put banners in the core commercial community areas, we put flyers in every shop, and I have all of that here if you'd like to see it. We put flyers in every shop, we got sponsors to fund several mass mailings that cost thousands of dollars, and the mass mailings went to everybody in the boundaries of the Village of Spring Hill, which includes 5,000 households. We did this, we did this flyer that specifically gave everybody an opportunity, told every single venue that was going on with the planning process. The first community meeting that we held was advertised in the same way, with right-of-way signs and yard signs. It was held at Spring Hill College Burn Hall, and over 600 people attended. After securing a community planning grant with the help of Senator Hatt Myers, we hired Dover Cole to specifically address only three commercial areas in Spring Hill. The intersection of Old Shell Road and McGregor, the intersection of Old Shell Road and Bentley Road, and the intersection near the Roundabout by Museum Drive and North McGregor Avenue. We used only volunteers to initiate an intense community planning process that included Mayor Jones, his entire staff, city council members, urban development, city engineering, traffic engineering, the electrical department, and literally every city department attended the meetings. We also held meetings engaging commercial property owners, business owners, residents, developers, and anyone else who called and requested a meeting. The vacant design studio on the side of Old Shell Road was donated by a property owner, and we hung a huge banner on the front of the building inviting the public to observe the week-long charade. All the meetings were open to the public, all the meetings were held in the center of the building, where people browsing the design studio could stop and listen to anything that was being brought up. Information was gathered to determine, from all of these people, to determine how these commercial areas in Spring Hill should develop in the future. The date to unveil the plan was basically announced by an extensive newspaper article. We did more yard signs, more signs in the commercial areas, and it was held at St. Paul's School Auditorium to a standing room crowd of over 550 people, including the mayor and several staff members. I have them all, but there were over 15 newspaper articles that were at least half-page articles that talked about the plan, the planning process, the Village of Spring Hill, and everything that we were doing. I'm just going to read one paragraph from one of the newspaper articles that sort of validates this. It says, "The Village of Spring Hill has performed a community planning effort that is nothing short of astounding, and all volunteer group has successfully undertaken a task that could keep a whole city planning department busy for a year. The volunteers obtained grants, researched planning companies, wrote an outstanding RFP, hired one of the top town planning firms in the country, and organized countless community meetings to ensure citizens' input, all while staying in close contact with the city officials. The results of these incredible efforts were presented in front of a packed auditorium of Spring Hill community citizens who strongly voiced their approval of the plan to create a healthy, beloved, walkable community. Indeed, the Village of Spring Hill is a model of bringing together all people to carefully consider the future." That being said, I think the validity and inclusiveness of this plan is without question. The zoning associated with the master plan is the same zoning that will be advocated in the new map for Mobile Plan currently being developed by this administration. It is also the same zoning that has been implemented successfully all over the country and abroad. The majority of the properties, like BJ brought up, funding North McGregor Avenue around this proposed development already zoned commercial and could easily be developed into something like a gas station with a large asphalt parking lot.
Ms. St. John, you need to wrap up.
Okay. The Village of Spring Hill encourages smaller shops and smaller retail establishments that will serve the community around it, which transitions better into these neighborhoods. We hope that you supported this 11 years ago, the council then, and we hope you'll support it again, because this is the next step. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. St. John while she's at the podium? All right, thank you very much. Okay, the public hearing continues. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning?
Good morning. I live at 3751 Shipes Lane, Jeff Quinelli, and I just wanted to say a couple things. I want to say that me and my family have lived on Shipes Lane for 13 years. We raised our two children there, and we want on with the best things for our neighborhood. We are excited about the much-needed improvements in our area, and we have chosen to do our project by the Village of Spring Hill code because of the drastic improvements that they've made to our area, and that's pretty much what I want to say.
And you are the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this rezoning, please come to the podium. Anyone?
Good morning. My name is Angela Brown. I live at 3773 Shipes Lane.
Can you pull the microphone down just a little bit?
I'm sorry.
That's better. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
I live at 3773 Shipes Lane, which is across the street from the proposed changes. I have nothing against progress. My main concern about this is that Shipes Lane has traditionally been a residential neighborhood. What Mr. Quinelli has proposed is turning two lots into a parking lot, which is directly across from my property. Well, adjacent, sort of directly, I'm sorry. However, he wants the driveway to come out right in front of my property. That's my main concern. The proposal negates any residential homes there. When I moved in that property, it was residential. Yes, he bought those properties. They were homes at the time. He bought several other properties. Some properties on Shipes Lane, he had, he bought, he demolished the homes on those properties and built new houses, which were great, and we thought the neighborhood was gradually being improved. I don't see where a parking lot coming out onto Shipes Lane is improvement. That's my main objective. I'm also concerned, although it's been said the property values should increase, I am concerned that maybe there will be traffic problems, maybe there will be some environmental problems. I mean, you're getting rid of land. You're making asphalt or whatever. The other concern, when Mr. Quinelli put his blue building up, he put that up and encroached on beyond his property line. Eventually, that was approved after the fact. I feel like when that, initially, they approved a parking lot, a driveway next to that building that was supposed to go either way. Now they want to erase that and come out onto Shipes Lane. I don't think that's, I don't think it's a fair thing to do. I don't think the neighbors on Shipes Lane are being considered. Mr. Quinelli lives toward the end of Shipes Lane, not right in the middle. I think he may be four houses, three, four houses from the end of Shipes Lane. I am on the other end that enters from McGregor Avenue. When you go out Shipes Lane to enter McGregor Avenue now, if you want to turn to your right, at this time, they have those little cones out there. You have to go further out, and you have other traffic coming in. If cars are there, it's going to block some of the site. I think all of these things should be considered. I don't know that they have been. Those sketches that he's shown of these, this building, when we first saw it, was just shown as like individual little properties. Now it's a large building with different facades. At this point, I don't know how it's going to end up. I don't know if this is going to increase any crime. I don't know, I mean, when the building's closed down or whatever, you know, kids come through as far as drugs are concerned. I don't know what happens when those businesses are closed, but now they've got a large parking lot to come into. I just wonder if he's considered everything. And I ask that you all consider the fact that this has been a quiet neighborhood normally. Yes, it's had its concerns, I suppose, as far as drugs being done, but it's been done by not necessarily people who are living there and working every day and trying to better themselves. I just ask that you all consider the fact that there are other people on this street that could be affected, are in this neighborhood. We're trying to keep it a neighborhood. Thank you.
And are there any questions of Ms. Brown while she is at the podium? Anyone? Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Ms. Brown. Are you primarily concerned about traffic that is leaving the new building coming onto your street? Is that?
That is one of the main concerns, yes.
So, so are you saying that if it was a way to config the traffic where they would have to go out another way and not on your street, that would satisfy you?
It would be better. My best-case scenario would be homes. However, this is someone else's property, not mine. I don't have the funding to put up homes there, but it would be better, as far as I'm concerned, if it was traditional homes for, with people.
Okay, their home, their houses that were taken out for this due business. Were anyone living in those homes?
Okay. One of the homes that he purchased where he's taken a parking, place in a parking lot, there was a couple living there. They were elderly, and they were living there at the time he purchased the property. The other property, the owner had moved into a different facility. She was elderly. Her husband had died a few years before that. When he was alive, he maintained his property as best he could. I think they may have lived there more than 60 years. They took care of their properties for years. They worked, they were contributors to the community. The other couple had lived there almost 20 years, I believe. Well, they became elderly and started having problems as well. Mr. Quinelli was able to purchase that property. I was not able to. However, since he had purchased properties down toward the other end and had built homes, I thought, however, I cannot say he ever said or told me or said anything to me about building homes there, but he definitely did not say anything about building a parking lot there. The other homes on, he's not spoken of today, however, once these buildings go up, he has some other property that is right next to my property. My concern, of course, is if these businesses go up, other businesses will probably follow. And with that, I'm not sure what he's planning to build there, but if there are businesses, like he said, it could be, or like, I don't know if it'll be an ABC store or that type of store, a bar. I don't know what will go there, but what initially goes there may be one thing. What leaves there after five years may be something totally different. That's where my concern is. He may have really great intentions, however, they don't always pan out, and that's where my concerns lie.
Any other questions of Ms. Brown?
I don't have a question of Ms. Brown, but I do have a question of staff when they, if they're going to come up and address us or answer any kind of other questions, because I don't think she's prepared, but I'm listening to her concerns.
Okay, we can ask Mr. Olson. Thank you, Ms. Brown, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this while the public hearing is still open?
Geneva Gales, 925 Noel Street, also own property on Spring Hill Avenue, directly across from the blue building. Make this short and sweet, we love our community. We are happy to invite these new residents coming into the community. I have been a part of this community for 67 years, and we should hope that the businesses being built down there are being built, I mean, Spring Hill, I mean, McGregor and Old Shell Road is three blocks away. There's property up there for sale, all of these little shops that they want to build, but they, this gentleman has come into this community and purchased homes from some poor people. people and invested in that to make money, okay? I'm not saying that's a bad thing. It's bad for us. It's not bad for him. When you can open your door and go out into a business, that diminishes your property. My cousin lives directly across the street from where he's wanting to put these buildings, okay? That's going to diminish her property. He has property on his end of the street. He wouldn't put businesses down there. He's going to put homes down there. So, what we are trying to say is, keep a community a community. And that's, that's all I have to say. I, I don't want to make it rough for anybody or hard for anybody. We're just trying to keep the street a community, street with houses on it. Please consider this. And thank you.
All right, any questions? Anyone else would like to speak during the public hearing on this rezoning? Mr. Olson, if you would?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming down. I know that normally, when it's a residential street, we try to discourage commercial egress and ingress. And I see that there's already a cut, you know, near the building that's directly off of McGregor. So, you know, listening to the residents that are on the residential profile, you try to do as much mitigation as you can do. So, I would like to just know the thought about letting the commercial traffic come down that street and why wasn't just the egress and ingress off McGregor recommended?
Well, basically, we reviewed the plan that they submitted. Initially, they had two curb cuts onto Shipes Lane. Traffic engineering made comments and looked at the traffic flow, determined that one curb cut would be more appropriate on Shipes Lane and that the traffic would not be a major impact to Shipes Lane. That's why it was allowed to have that access as opposed to restricting it solely to the access on McGregor.
And that was looking at the entire block being redeveloped into commercial?
The entire block, the entire front?
Well, yeah. Going, I'm assuming that, that beige color home will be raised if, if what they're, what they're showing on our front cover?
Right. The house that exists on the corner is to be raised.
Right, okay. So, that was taken into that there would be six or seven different businesses?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would not affect additional traffic onto, onto the residential quarter?
It would not be a significant impact was basically the report from traffic engineering.
Is it, is it something where they cannot come in off of McGregor only? I mean, I see a big cut there. So, could the parking then swing, it's swinging in the rear, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Where we, that's where the profile is supposed to be. So, could that just be the only egress? It looks wide enough that people can go in and out.
It, it is a two-way drive because that is existing.
Right.
That was required for the existing development. The...
I mean, if people are going to be wa, if the idea is that we're creating this village effect to get people to walk. So, if you create a path that people can get to the facility off of Shipes Lane, then I just, I understand, because we see this a lot in West Mobile, and you try to do as much mitigation between the commercial footprint and a characteristic of residential. Because a lot of times, that it's a different, you know, set of stress or rules, so to speak. And I'm, I just was thinking that if there was a way, because the, the parking lot's going to be screened. That's going to be required.
Correct.
But if there's just no way that there's a curb cut, then that just creates a more residential profile for that street. But still, there's access to this nice facility. So...
And I have to go back to my memory on this. If I remember correctly, there were a couple of variances granted to that original building that is currently there.
The blue one that's up and running.
And part of it was that that driveway be narrower than the minimum, normal minimum standard, but still allow two-way traffic. So, with the increase in number of parking spaces, to have more cars on a minimum or less than normal with driveway may not be something that is desirable.
Right. But you're saying in one breath that there wouldn't be a lot of traffic?
Right.
So, yet, you're saying there's a lot of parking or to make code. What, what are the number of par, what is that parking lot going to host? Do we know the numbers? Does anybody?
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I'd have to count. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Wasn't it 45, Richard?
I, I think it was something like that.
Coming and going off of a residential street. I did, I just, you know, I'm sensitive to that by all means. And if there was a way to make sure that the parcel is still viable and, you know, gets the traffic in and out without having to use that. I mean, it's, it's certainly a through street. It's not a through street, but it's a residential street. And we often discourage the, the commercial corridor coming through the traffic.
Yes, ma'am. But it, a lot of times on corner lots, it is allowed.
Well, but if, if additional, if it's rezoned all the way down to the corner, then hypothetically, you could see a lot more commercial coming up. And then people, if, you know, they could park in there and walk. So, I'm looking at the future of that whole corridor, which, yes, has transitioned and gone commercial. So, it's, but how do you create what is a successful residential profile to, and not harm it?
Any, whether, were there any other comments during the planning commission about the traffic? I remember there were two curb cuts, and then they limited that to one curb cut.
Correct.
With fencing, an extra landscape. I don't remember all the details, but I know there was a lot of discussion about that.
Yes, ma'am, there was. And basically, again, traffic engineering's recommendation was that it be one curb cut onto Shipes. And it, the plan was modified to do that. They also did not want that driveway to be closer to McGregor because of the impact of such a curb cut so close to an intersection. And that's a standard requirement of theirs.
Okay, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, my friend, I have this same concern. It seems to me that we're looking at a double whammy. First of all, we're taking out residential property for commercial. Because the Villages Spring Hill would like to have parking in the rear. So, in order to do that, they have to take out these, two of these houses, okay? But then to come back to dump traffic on the residential street is a whole different matter. If you go up to the cleaners on O'Shea Road at Herbert, it's a, it's a dry cleaners up there. And they made a curb cut off their property onto that residential street. And the city made them close it right back up, saying you can't dump residential traffic onto, business traffic onto a residential street. They made them all come out on O'Shea Road. So, we go up here to Shipes Lane and say, where we, let's dump some traffic on them. I think we need to treat them all the same. If it's commercial, the traffic ought to go on a commercial street, not residential. That's how I see it. That's what we've been trying to do all over this city. Keep commercial traffic on a commercial street. Keep residential traffic on a residential street. And I think these residents has a legitimate gripe saying they don't want the traffic. I don't disagree with them.
Well, I think, I think the question comes down to, if you don't have the curb cut on Shipes, can you make it work with having just the one curb cut off McGregor for the two buildings to get to the parking? Because you talked about it's a narrower...
Yes, ma'am. Again, I'm going from my recollection of the variance. It is narrower. I believe that it would accommodate the two-way traffic. But that is something that would be up to the council to determine if you choose to deny them access to Shipes. Traffic, I think, would flow better. And that was basically, again, traffic engineering. But it could be reconfigured.
All right. Well, going further on this, to reconfigure, and Jim, you need to weigh in on this. They have already been through multiple planning commission meetings, getting this into the format that it's in as we are looking at it today. To change the curb cut, is that so substantial that it has to go back out for advertising and that sort of thing?
Doesn't change the use.
Doesn't change use?
It was not a PUD, but it would have an impact on the variance in that it is a larger site and would need to, I believe, go back to the Board of Adjustment to amend that variance.
We've been pretty consistent, as Councilman Richardson said, about applications where they were going to put their commercial traffic on a, on a residential street. And I realize that this is, and this has been under a lot of microscopes. It's gotten a lot of public exposure. And, and the community wants walkability. So, if we're, we're, if we're going to encourage that, then maybe having the one driveway would make for, or the one egress and ingress make it even more so that people wouldn't get in their cars to do, to go. You know, and again, it's, I'm, I'm looking at this curb cut here that's sitting by that blue building. I don't see a picture of, of Shipes Lane. But how, what is the difference in their sizes? There, it's, it's a residential street. So, you're not, you're not getting them into a, a better organization as far as two-way traffic. Because, you know, it's not, it's the same kind of entry point.
Madam President?
Mr. Small?
Could we just have our counselor and the city to get together and just hold this off to next week and try to work this out to see if, if that's possible?
Well, this is a public hearing today. The ordinance is on the agenda for a first read anyway, so it would be laid over.
Yes.
It would be laid over anyway.
We'll just work this out throughout the week.
But the curb cut to Shipes was a condition of the zoning. So, the curb cut was advertised. In fact, everybody was notified that it was under discussion. So, I'll talk to Rick about the variance and what that involved between now and next week. But I would think that because the curb cut was put in there, then y'all can take it out. It's already been advertised, y'all can take it out.
Yeah, and I think the variance that you're talking, you were talking about the variance for the McGregor side.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, for the existing building. And variances like planning approvals, PUDs, or site plan specific.
But even whether they got a, a change to the variance or not, you could still make it work, variance or none, change of the variance.
Yes, just keeping the traffic off of the residential if possible.
Since we're talking about this, I don't know, Jeff, if you can hear what we're, what we're talking about. If you want to address this very quickly, since...
Just the applicant.
Yeah, you are the applicant.
The, coming in off of McGregor, there was a variance approved because the blue building is there and there's a property line. If not mistaken, there's not enough room for two-way traffic off of McGregor. Now, when it was just the, the blue building, which was done by the Villages Spring Hill Code, hence the reason it has to be up on McGregor. That is, from what I understand, not enough room for two to cross. It is if it's just one office, but it's not for multiple use. And also, there's two curb cuts. One curb cut would be further down. I believe that's the one that the planning commission approved. But some of the traffic that's coming in is coming down McGregor and turning right beside that building. So, it's not like the only way to get into the property is off Shipes Lane. So, you're getting both of those. Never mind on, in front of the house that's being torn down there, the one on the corner. That's part of the $35,000, $40,000 of sidewalk, street lights, and on-street parking that we donated to the city in doing the other project. So, you'd have to rip all of that out in order to put another driveway in McGregor. Never mind, there's only 200 feet on McGregor. So, these things are being squeezed in, you know, 20, 25 feet, kind of like downtown Fairhope in accordance with the Villages Spring Hill up on McGregor to allow for the parking in the back. And as far as walkability, we've put in a 12-foot sidewalk walking down the front, and that's going to continue down Shipes Lane except for the one exit coming out.
The one curb cut.
And the, and the, and where that is proposed is actually a bit further than down the, down the street than Ms. Brown's driveway.
And that's only a one-way out?
Completely vacant. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's not a two-way drive?
No, it is a two-way because that's what the city dictated it had to be. The traffic department said it had to be a two-way. Now, they were allowing one way down McGregor, past the on-street parking, past the three street lights, turning into the facility. So, you've got one way in off of McGregor and two ways off of Shipes because that's the city said you had to put a two-way off of Shipes.
So, so, so that's the issue here. Make sure we all understand it. Going off McGregor is just one way in at this point.
Yes, ma'am. That is one way in.
It's not two-way because of the space issue.
Because of initially, that lot was a 50-foot lot. And when you put a building on a 50-foot lot and the building, you know, everything's not perfect, it's narrower at the corner, hence the reason a few months back, I was, came before you guys and got the permission to add another foot. Or there would have probably been 15 feet between the building and the property because it was only a 50-foot lot at that time.
So, all the traffic that comes in has to go out Shipes, is what you're saying? They can't come back out?
The city engineering, that's what they said had happened. If, it's just because there's a building there.
My friend, Jim, work on this. Let the record show that the idea that on the main street where the traffic is, you've got one curb cut. Where the people are, you've got two.
No, it's one curb cut.
Uh-uh. Shipes, you've got two.
Right. One curb cut.
You have two on, you have two on Shipes, but they are reducing that to one.
Well, it's one curb cut, but it's two-way traffic.
Yeah, well, no, there's, there's two there now. The city is making it one instead of two. So, they're closing it.
Okay, you're taking two and make one.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a two-way.
So, you're, so it is shrinking it.
Madam President, I have a question.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Quinelli, could you live with a one-way exit on Shipes?
I, I don't see where that, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at it. I haven't thought about it until just now, but...
One way in off of McGregor, one way out on Shipes?
I don't know that that would be a problem. I'd love to talk to my engineer to make sure that's really feasible or not feasible.
One way out going to McGregor?
No, I think that would probably be fine. But I, but I believe our initial plan, we did have it done that way, but the city engineer's office said we had to have a two-way.
Yeah, I, I would just think that that would greatly reduce the number of...
Cars going through the neighborhood.
Right. Number of cars on Shipes going in that facility, especially if it was an out rather than an in.
Yes.
You just come out, turn right and go? That'd be, that'd be fine with me. That's, like I said initially, that was the plan we submitted, but we were told we couldn't do that.
Jim, if, if that's the will of the council and Mr. Quinelli agrees, is that something that we can change?
Without going back?
Without going back?
Yes.
All right.
And that would make having to address the variance a moot point because it's all one lot. It's one-way traffic.
Yeah, you're so good at the opening.
One way in than one way out would address that.
And you just put some signage up to make sure.
Oh, yeah. You'd have to configure the curb so that they couldn't go the other way.
Well, that, that sounds like a possible solution. Anybody else? Any other questions?
Madam President, just not to create a, a through fare on Shipes, we're going to have to give a traffic engineering, but my novice opinion is that needs to be right out. We need to keep traffic, so right in, right out. And I think it flows very well, but that's, I'll be interested in the, in the traffic engineering opinion, if I can be kept.
Access from McGregor would not necessarily need to be right in. It could be from either direction.
It could, it could be both. I, I would be open to that. But, but what I'm saying is you can move the, if you had a right out only on Shipes, you can move it closer to the corner because it no longer affects the, the concern. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true, too. Any, Mr. Lyon?
Can I speak to Mr. Richardson's comment?
Sure.
I think there is precedent for allowing commercial traffic on a residential street, McGregor Square, Berwin Drive?
Madam President, is there a question on the floor by, for this gentleman?
No, he, he just was...
But I'm just going to try to stick by our rules here. We don't, we don't generally, we, we ask people to come down, and no disrespect, but we just have to conduct by rules.
All right. Any other questions or comments, counsel?
I hope it works out.
I, I think what we're talking about might be a fairly easy solution, Jeff, if that's...
No, I'm fine with that as long as it doesn't present some sort of engineering nightmare that you can't do it. I'm not an engineer, but it sounds, sounds fine. Like I said, I'm pretty sure we submitted a plan that did do that, trying to... a plan that did do that, trying to limit the traffic on the Shipes Lane by turning out, because the property's only about, I want to say about a hundred and fifty, sixty down Shipes, so that's not very far for, you know, they can be right back on McGregor pretty quick.
Between now and next week, if Mr. Rossler and Olson could get together and with Nick and our traffic engineering folks, and just make sure that we're going down the right path on this, and then what we need to change, we can, we can look at it next week, see if everybody's agreeable.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manzi?
Was it Ms. Brown?
Ms. Brown.
And the other, uh, Ms., are you all following what's been discussed here? Would that, would that be a better solution for you, rather than what's being proposed now?
And it's screened.
Yeah, yeah, it's all buffered.
Yeah, I believe there's a, I believe that, that the previous meeting, the Planning Commission required me to have a thirty-foot space pass from Shipes Lane towards onto the property, so there's got, there's got to be evergreens and some stuff like that for buffering.
Yeah, to screen.
Yeah.
Because they don't, they don't want to see a parking lot, they've already made it clear.
At least we're parked somewhere else.
Exactly. Well, and there is parking on the street too, so that, that helps with that.
True, there is.
Okay, all right, anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, all right, with that then, unless anyone else wants to speak to this proposal, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to determine if the structures at four-ten Driver Street, twelve-fifty Arlington Street, thirteen-fifty A St. Stevens Road, and thirteen-fifty B St. Stevens Road are public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
All right, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience today who would like to speak to any of these properties, please come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry I was late, so I didn't get a chance to hear you talk about thirteen-fifty St. Stevens Road.
It's St. Stevens Road?
Yes. My name's Carla Bilbo. I've received letters from the city about the property. My father passed in 2012. I know that's not the city's problem, but he didn't get his business in order before he passed. There are five children, and we're currently trying to get a understanding of what we want to do with the property. There are four of us in agreement with what we want to do with the property, we understand it is, it's a nuisance, it needs to come down, or it needs to be restored. We're just asking that if you would give us a chance to come together as a family, as one, to decide what we want to do with the property. I know it's been five years, it's a long time, but I want, and I am the administrator of the property, I want to do what's right for all the five of us. So if you would just give us a little time to come in agreement with the one sibling that, that does not want to come in agreement with it, and we will take care of the property. I don't want to go above her and cause family friction, but I, we do understand that it has to come down. We were trying to give it to one sibling, and four of us agree on it, and one does not. We don't want to have that division in our family.
Right, we certainly understand.
Whatever the city can do to work with us to get it resolved, we would greatly appreciate.
What we're doing today is just declaring the structure to be a nuisance and order it either repaired or demolished, so you've got some time, but what I'm gonna do is point you up in the direction of Mr. Doggamba, and he will help you walk through the process and tell you what kind of timeline you're looking at, and then if you do need some extra time, then David and his department will be happy to work with you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This continues our public hearing, if there's anyone who would like to speak to any of these properties, please come to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're in twelve-fifty Arlington Street.
Twelve-fifty Arlington Street, if you'd give us your name and address for the record.
Twelve, my, my name is Sharon Peddaway, my husband Jerry Peddaway, we just need extra time, we, um, had, our daughter died, and right in the middle of us trying to upgrade the property, so that kind of set us back, but we're just asking for more time to...
Okay. Just like the previous lady who was here, this is just a, a hearing to determine if it needs to be repaired or demolished, and Mr. Doggamba is out in the atrium right now speaking to the lady who was just up here with us. If you would get with him and just talk about a timeline and what you need help from the city to do, then he will get with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Right out there, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to any of these properties? All right then, with that, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Frank E. Anderson Jr. doing business as Four A Carriers LLC for a certificate of public convenience and necessity for a transportation service.
Okay, this is a public hearing on the, um, public convenience and necessity application, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Okay, with that then, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Jerry Mosley.
Mr. Mosley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations on y'all's recent elections.
Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I would like to address is first impressions.
Mr. Mosley, if you'll give us your address.
Oh, fifty-seven oh-four Foxfire Road, yeah. And of course, everyone agrees first impressions are a great thing, and you need a good impression. Well, I think Mobile's in, going in the wrong direction, we have turned Mobile into a dump site, and I mean, we could have signs up saying, "Welcome to Mobile, home of the roadside dump," that's, that's about how bad it's got. I travel all over Mobile, I see garbage everywhere, it upsets me, I'm sure it upsets you, and we need to address this in a big way, I mean, it, it doesn't matter what the fines are, I followed someone the other day, they slowed down at a railroad crossing, the next thing I see is a can fly out the window, and it's, I've, I've seen recently a couch that was thrown out, but, but they seem to slow down the railroad track when they pass there, that's a dump site, and you go to any railroad crossing around town, you'll see those are where they tend to throw out everything, it's a good spot to slow down, throw it out, and tires, I called the city, told them there was a couch laying there, gave them the location, said there's a couple of tires sitting near it, well, they picked up the couch after I called a couple of different times, they, I called back, said the tires are still there, we can't pick up tires. I'm like, well, what do we do? I mean, is it, does citizens' responsibility go round up the tires that are thrown on the side of the road? And according to Ms. Gregory, they are supposed to pick up tires if they're told about it, and, uh, things like that, I mean, those, that's one of the biggest issues that I have with the city is trash, and I know y'all had meetings yesterday about the interstate and the bridge, we haven't finished Highway ninety-eight yet, and that's been going on for, what, ten years, longer, and it's not a raised facility, it's, it's basically ready to probably put pavement on, but we can't get to that point, and that's the busiest highway in the state, bloody ninety-eight, that ought to, you know, tell you something, and, and it is a bloody road, I've, I've, no, just recently, they built a Dollar General up the street from us there, Omaha Road, a lady pulled out that evening, got hit by an eighteen-wheeler, killed her. So it's an ongoing, just a deadly road, and I don't know, we, we need to look into finishing that before we start a major billion-dollar project, I know this is gonna be a two-hundred-million-dollar project, but it seemed like we could be working on trying to get that funded before we start another project.
Mr. Mosley, I think Mr. Williams is trying to get me to let you know that Highway ninety-eight is not a city project, and neither is the bridge necessarily, so we just need to stay on city issues.
Right, it's federal government and a state project, but I, I mean, as, as a body, y'all, this is part of Mobile County, and, you know, y'all are the people that we depend on to push these issues, and I know High Tower is supposedly involved in that, but I hear, I see he's very involved in this bridge, you know, which is going to probably be a toll bridge, and I personally can't see having to stop, pay toll is going to be something that's gonna speed up traffic, you know, so that, that, you know, is, is kind of a crazy thing for me, but, uh, anyway, uh, and the tall grass issue with people letting the grass get too tall, uh, we've got neighbors, I, we have a few, but one in particular, that the only time he cuts his grass is when I call and report it, and that's usually an ordeal, because I have to call a few times, sometimes they'll say, "Well, we didn't get your first call, we didn't, it wasn't written up," you know, I'm like, "Well, I called two weeks ago, and I'm checking now to see if they, you know, had been notified," and eventually I have to get with a supervisor, luckily I was able to get with a Mrs. Hillary who's sympathetic to our calls, but it takes me getting with her each time, and at one time, the grass weeds eighteen inches, and so the last time it was cut was in May of this year, when they last came out and issued something, well, they just issued another here a week ago, after me getting in touch with Ms. Hillary, she finally, she got somebody out there, they gave him a, uh, the enforcement, uh, issued thing, whatever, anyway, they, he did cut his grass, but it's only whenever he is told to. He's got about as much grass growing on his roof as some people have in their yard, I mean, the house is just falling down. Now, this is not a small house, this is a four-thousand-square-foot house, and it's never been cleaned, the guy's been there fifteen years, he just lets it fall down around us, and, you know, it, it upsets everyone that lives there, we've got neighbors that are trying to sell their houses, and one of those that's trying to sell has a house, it's, it's, it's on the market for five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, his neighbor's probably more, because it's a little nicer than his, and they're both trying to get out of the neighborhood because of things like this, and we, we need to address those issues.
I'm sorry, Mr. Doggamba is not in here, he's, he's out speaking to the people who were here about the demolitions, but we, we discussed at our pre-conference meeting some of the issues that you were bringing up, and I know David was ready to, to answer some of that, in particular, getting the grass and the weeds cut, and picking up tires and things off the, the right-ofways and that sort of thing.
Well, I think we need to pick the city, you go to other cities, recently went to Orlando, beautiful city, clean, you know, you didn't see garbage anywhere, landscaping, and like at, uh, Spring Hill, I said it was Forest Hill at McGregor, there's a sign, Villages of Spring Hill, garbage everywhere, and this was, for weeks there was garbage, just kept adding and adding, you know, every time I'd go past there, it's like, this is crazy, you know, at least we should be able to get, you know, people to realize, or pay thousand-dollar fines, something, you know, gotta do something.
I understand. Mr. Mosley, Mr. Wesh is the mayor's chief of staff, and he has heard everything that you have said, and so Mr. Doggamba heard us earlier this morning at our pre-conference meeting, because I, I told him I had spoken with you, and we discussed a lot of these things, so we, we understand, we need to do a better job on enforcement.
If we're gonna project a good image for people that come into the city, I mean, you don't want to bring them down ninety-eight to, you know, and plus, there's always somebody to take your money when you get to the interstate, we need to give them a sign, "Welcome to Mobile," because they're always there, I've donated myself over the years, you know, and, uh, so, anyway, y'all take care.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Madam President.
Mr. Small?
I'd like to thank Mr. Mosley for coming down on this morning and bringing the light, you know, in front of the city. I would like to ask the administration to reevaluate the three-one-one calls and the times, I had go out many times in District Three, and I called three-one-one with the citizen, trying to teach them how to call three-one-one and also get a SRO number, and many times, I ain't gonna say many times, but sometimes there are times that the operator don't know everything, you know, I know they might be new, or they don't know that the city might do this, they might not do that, but that is an issue, yesterday, called three-one-one about five fifteen, and stood on the line for almost like nine minutes, and the resident I was in front of was saying, "See, Mr. Small, this is what we constantly go through," and even with the two oh eight seven two eleven number, I called last week, I saw a crime in process, in progress, and I called, and I was on hold for a minute, for a couple minutes, excuse me, before someone actually came on live, but that's something that the administration need to look at and observe and reevaluate.
Mr. Mosley, David, can you? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, CJ, go ahead.
No problem, it's the time for three-one-one, the operation time, and also the operators, make sure that they're full of knowledge of the city duties and operations, and also the two oh eight seven two eleven number, non-emergency police department number, thank you.
Mrs. Rich, go ahead.
Yes, and, you know, in talking at pre-council, we realized, and this was news to me, so I'm glad to learn it, and that is, the city will pick up the tires, but they have to use a special truck to do that, they can't use the same truck that picks up our normal trash or couch, and for, and certainly don't want to get in the middle of operations, so just being able to instruct a person to ask for the correct vehicle to come out, you know, might help and expedite the organization of getting the right response. So, Mr. Mosley, I know he's, he's left the, our, our audience, but perhaps if he knew to say, "Please send the, the proper truck to get the tires."
Well, I think probably what he's saying, if he's calling three-one-one with the information that there are tires on the right-ofway, does he then have to say, "Will you send the special truck?" Our department should know immediately that a special truck needs to go pick up those tires at that address, rather than the individual having to figure it out.
Well, but at the same time, he saw that the couch was removed, so he was frustrated, because the tire's still sat there, because that truck might have been busy on another side of town, so it's just knowing, you know, what the response is.
Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Small?
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, you know, the operators at three-one-one, you know, most, majority of them are great, I'd love to, um, talk to them, but you have some, they are not familiar as some, but for a citizen, had to say, "Call the certain department, this department," that, that's not the citizen's job, that's supposed to be the specialist's job, which is the operator, thank you.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Madam President, if we get down to the bottom line, the bottom line is going to be that the citizens do not know what to do if three-one-one fails, if they fail at three-one-one, they believe that their appeal process calls for them to contact their council member, we don't have anything to do with blight, not anything to do with blight. We, we could form more calls, we probably get more calls on blight than three-one-one. So what I did, I wrote, Ms. Thompson, a letter, to Ms. Thompson, "Can you tell, please tell me what the citizens should do if three-one-one fails them, what is their appeal process? What should they do when they can't get from three-one-one what they're seeking?" I never got an answer. Well, I took from that, I'm not taking the hit, I'm not taking no hit on no blight now, I believe that there ought to be instructions to these citizens on what to do if they keep on calling three-one-one and they don't get any of what they're calling about, uh, resolved, I think they ought to be told what to do, and calling the council, in fact, Madam President, we should instruct our secretaries not to take blight calls, just forward them right on to the administration, because the, the law says that council members are forbidden from interfering in administrative matters, it is an administrative matter, I guarantee you, if someone called the city council's office and said, "My husband just shot somebody," I bet you they, they won't be trying to take, they should call the police, that's what they're gonna tell them, get the police, that's what they ought to do when they're called about blight, we ought to tell them where they're called, because we don't deal with blight, until we get down to that, they're gonna keep coming down here, the citizens need to know what to do, and, and know, he, he has traveled all over the city, and he says he saw blight, all he had to do was call three-one-one, if he didn't get anything from there, two oh eight seven three nine five, directly in the mayor's office, he's in charge of blight, that's what the people in District One, they know what to do, because I've already told them what to do, if you can't, can't get your matter resolved at three-one-one, dial two oh eight seven three nine five. three nine five. The buck stops there, not two oh eight seven four four one.
All right, Mr. Richardson, anyone else? All right, I think we have, uh, discussed that one enough. Anyone else coming to speak? I know we're waiting for Ms. Lambert to, do you know when she's going to be here?
No, but we have some people scheduled to speak, Karen Kennedy.
Well, we'll continue with that until Ms. Lambert comes in. Um, we will have to take a recess shortly to certify the election, so I'm just waiting for Ms. Lambert to come in before we do that. So in the meantime, we'll go ahead with our speakers.
Karen Kennedy.
This is the little handout for the council, so thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Karen Kennedy, the managing director, development director at Mobile Ballet, and we are located at forty-three fifty-one downtown Orlik North. Um, we're so appreciative of the opportunity to share some exciting news with the council today about our upcoming season. And thank you again for your investment in Mobile Ballet through performance contract and our exciting season at the Mobile Civic Center Theater. Uh, we have a handout for you and we are thrilled to open our season this year, bringing home Blaine Hoven, who is a native of Mobile and a product of the Mobile City Schools. Um, he is a soloist at American Ballet Theater in New York, and we have commissioned a special show, uh, Full Circle with Blaine Hoven to bring him home. Uh, he will be bringing a group of dancers from American Ballet Theater who are considered, uh, within the top ten companies in, in the world. And we also have with us today our new guest artistic director, Katia Garza, to introduce to the council. And, uh, Katia is a native of Mexico, uh, now an American citizen. She trained professionally in Mexico and danced with ballet to Monterey, and then was a principal dancer with the Orlando Ballet for fourteen seasons. She now is teaching and coaching and producing choreography all over the country, uh, based out of Orlando. And we are thrilled that we will be presenting two of her ballets, uh, The Nutcracker, which will be a totally new production, and Midsummer Night's Dream, uh, which will be the first time that her ballet is seen in Mobile. So wanted her to say a few words to you as well.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me be here. Uh, my name is Katia Garza. I've been living in the United States for seventeen years and it's my first time working in Mobile. And it was, I was thrilled to find so much talent and so many kids that wants, they want to dance. And we've been having like two different auditions. We have more than sixty kids showing up. And I'm so happy to present the new Nutcracker for Mobile, for the city, and it's gonna be including around ninety people on stage. So we are gonna bring a lot of excitement for kids and maybe change the life of a lot of them that they can, I think now, in our times, we need to inspire kids to have a healthy, you know, uh, place to be and, um, spend some more, more time in investing in their, in their future. And I believe that ballet is always a good thing. And after hearing, um, a lot of the issues that the city has, I think that, I know, uh, our job is to bring, um, happiness and pleasant things for the city, and I hope we can count with your support.
Thank you. That sounds great. Always like, uh, hearing somebody say they want to spread happiness.
We also have, uh, board member Becky Tate, uh, is with us in the audience today too, so. Um, we will also be presenting Katia's Nutcracker and Midsummer Night's Dream in our Discover Dance program. Uh, so about four thousand students, K through twelve, will be with us at the Civic Center Theater for those school productions as well. Thank you so much.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Oh, Mr. Richardson, go ahead.
Yes.
I just want you to know that the only aesthetic amphitheater in the city of Mobile is in District One in Trenda Gardens. I have lights, sounds, air-conditioned dressing rooms, the whole thing. I want you, what about bringing the dancers to Trenda Gardens? What, what will we need to do?
Let's, let's talk. We, we would be happy to explore that, so, I can give you a call and make an appointment.
Give me a call, we are ready.
Good.
If you ring, we will spring.
Yep, that, that sounds great. You'd love to see it.
So, so are you still dancing?
Yes, I do. I'm a-
Okay, we, I want to hear you, Trenda Gardens, yes.
Yeah, I'm still performing. Um, I'm a independent and so I've been traveling, um, outside the United States and in, in the United States.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill.
Madam President, members of the council, administration in absence of our mayor and citizens of Mobile, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I don't want to take up too much of your time, just want to speak on a couple of issues. Uh, before doing so, I thank you for the regards for the people of Texas, let us all keep them lifted up in prayer. And, uh, I was unable to speak last week, so I didn't get to, uh, give my kudos. Uh, there are eight primary seats that lead the city of Mobile, and there were sixteen individuals who vied for an opportunity to represent the city, so I want to give my kudos to those sixteen individuals for stepping up. And I give the congratulations to the eight individuals who occupy those seats now. I look forward to working with you from this point on forward to progress our city forward. Um, I want to speak on three issues today, drainage, public safety, and parks and recreation. Now, before I speak about this, I was, uh, told with my communications through the city that it was a privilege to speak before the council and not a right. Now, I'm a little confused about that, so I will say that before I go into my comments. But I hope that we won't allow those miscommunications or misunderstandings to prevent us from being able to work together. These are not opportunities to attack the individuals, these are opportunities to share the burdens with the individuals who are leaders, so that we can actually move the city forward. Um, so we're gonna begin with the idea of, uh, the drainage. We know that the CIP is going to be coming up for an opportunity for renewal, and I'm hoping that you all will look at this as an opportunity to examine equity and equality. Now, in the previous years, through the CIP, we've had equal dispersment of our resources. Well, we've seen in several districts, some areas need more concern than others. If we're gonna move the city forward as a whole, I want us to look at an equitable approach, because the people aren't gonna look at and say, well, this area of the city is not up to par. This area of the city does not meet the standards. They're gonna say, this portion of Mobile is something that is gonna be looked at. And if we're gonna look at the entire city of Mobile, we need to be dispersing the resources to fit those areas that need the most improvements. And then, once you get past that, then we can start looking at the equal dispersment of those resources. And that primary objective, I feel, when we, if we renew this, should be drainage. Now, imagine if we went through something like Houston right now, we probably would have a lot longer time in trying to recover than what they will have because of the drainage issue. So when we look at CIP, I hope that you will please examine drainage as the top issue, not the equal dispersment in the districts, although the improvements are great and they make the city look amazing. But if we can focus on that drainage, I think the long term will be a lot better. Um, the public safety issue, I know that, uh, several you, and probably many in the audience as well, who frequent to the government plaza, they know, uh, Mr. David that sits out, that would be sitting outside. And I was wondering, you know, why Mr. David wasn't here, because as I pass going to my office, um, each week, if I don't stop to speak to him, I'll at least wave or honk, some of that nature. And, uh, it's a little different for me because I've known David since I was a little child. And, uh, he was assaulted recently, and he's currently at the, uh, Twin Oaks. And, uh, my parents are divorcing, so when I was staying with my mom, he would come, he would do a lot of the yard work. So looking at the idea of what happened to him, it really got me concerned about the issues that we're seeing within the city. Now, there are a lot of adults who are doing a lot of things, and we can't necessarily teach old dogs new tricks, but we can put an emphasis on the young people. We can put an emphasis on ensuring that we are allocating resources to go towards programs that are eradicating that change that we want to see. We can put the necessary resources towards organizations that are working to ensure that that next generation of adults don't carry out those same ideals of hostility, of hatred, of discrimination, the things that we're seeing that are drawing our country so far apart. And I hope that as you examine opportunity with your performance contracts in the upcoming fiscal year, that you will look at organizations that have been able to do that and that are working towards doing that, and ensuring that they have an opportunity to get the same support from the city as existing organizations have, that may have not necessarily been yielding the results as we see the different hikes that increase within our city. Um, the final part that I want to speak on is, uh, the parks and recreation. I was at a community meeting in Africa Town yesterday and they were quite upset about the idea that the park is not open, Hope Community Center is not open on Saturday. Now, we know that a, um, idle mind is the devil's playground for those of us who believe in the faith practices and the faith rhetoric. And for those centers not to be open on the weekends, that's a very dangerous thing for our communities. These are opportunities where kids would actually have the time to go and do things that are not cohesive for what we want to see as a positive city. So as we're examining what to do with our parking recreation, I do want to commend the city for the beautification measures, the improvements of the facilities themselves, but what programs are we implementing? What are we using the centers for? And I would like to work with the city to implement some of those programs. I have some designs that have been pretty successful, and I hope that we can sit down, each of us collectively or individually, however that might be, uh, most feasible for you, so that we can find ways to actually fix these problems. And again, these aren't attacks towards the individuals that are in the forefront, because a lot of people don't understand the stresses of being in these positions.
Mr. Hill, your, your time is up.
There are some of us that actually want to share this burden. And I think of moving forward, with the new four years at the table, we need to put drainage, public safety, parks and recreation as the top tier of our dinners. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
I hope we can find some way to look at that as being a right. Might be a limited right, you have to set the time and the date and how long we can speak, but it's definitely a right for us to speak to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Madam President, I just realized that a public hearing was left off the agenda. It's, it's a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of Nicholson Road, and also to consider a right of way fee as a condition of the vacation of Nicholson Road.
Okay. Um, one of the public hearings was left off the agenda, and that's vacation of Nicholson Road?
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's reopen the public hearing, so if there's anyone who wishes to speak on that, please come to the podium.
Morning, council members. I'm Clay Lanning with Jones Walker Law Firm, eleven North Water Street, Suite twelve hundred. Um, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, uh, really to answer any questions any of you may have. Uh, I, I don't think there'll, I hope there won't be any opposition to it, because the petitioner owns all the property fronting the portion of the street we're asking to be vacated, and the surrounding property owners have access through other public streets around there. So with that, I will defer the rest of my time to you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, are there any questions? Thank you, thank you for, for staying. Sorry we, uh, missed that.
And I believe Mr. Hunt wanted to speak on this matter also?
On, on what?
On the vacation of, that's what he signed up for.
Mr. Hunt, you want to speak to the vacation?
... three oh five Civic Center Drive.
Oh, the Civic Center Drive?
Yeah, that is a agenda item.
All right.
Well, we can close that public hearing and then go back to the presentation of petitions.
Right, yeah.
Do I speak now?
Yeah, Mr. Hunt, if you want to go ahead and speak to the Civic Center Drive, it's part of our presentations.
Hello, I'm Ronald Hunt. I guess my legal address is thirteen fifty-one Sandra Drive, though I reside in Theodore. So legally, my driver's license and most things are still in Mobile. I'd like to congratulate all of you on getting re-elected. I've enjoyed working with you over the last several years and probably will be a bit of a thorn in your side in the coming days over the budget. But today I wanted to talk a little bit about three oh five Civic Center Drive. I think it's good that we want to find an occupant for this property. Apparently, according to what I've heard, it's sat empty for a number of years, and just being occupied and used would be a very good use of this historic property, to bring it back up to a habitable situation. What I'm most concerned about is we're selling a lot of city property, and yet we have some needs in Mobile for city property that, to my knowledge, at my level of understanding, with the access that I have to you, have not really been addressed. And if, I hope, maybe Mr. Wesh or Mr. Woods will say that I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, there's really no plan to get the African-American archives reopened. I understand there's some problems with the building there, the air conditioning and some other things, and we have eliminated their twenty thousand dollar allocation with last year's fiscal year budget in two thousand seventeen. It's not on the proposed budget for two thousand eighteen, so there's no way to pay for an employee, but as I understand, the problem is, is the building right now needs some structural issues.
Mr. Hunt, if you would stick to the Civic Center Drive issue, which is what you want to speak, speak to?
Well, then I'd like to ask the, I'd like to ask the administration through you what they're going to do with this money. As I understand, the Siemens Hall or the old City Hall North self, sold for five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The Bush House, which is the carnival museum, sold for three hundred and one thousand dollars. The warehouse sold for roughly around ninety-five thousand dollars, and we're now selling three oh five Civic Center Drive. I'd like to know what this money is being used and why it isn't being put into projects like a visitor's center or getting the African-American archives reopened.
All right, I'm going to turn that question to the administration on all these various sales and what the proceeds are being used for.
Madam President, you may recall that a couple of years ago, when, uh, the administration started engaging with the council through its finance committee about excess property that we held, that was really, uh, only an expenditure to us. Um, we decided that the appropriate thing to do was to take sales proceeds of capital assets and to put them into an account that would in the future be used to purchase or expand other, uh, structural assets, buildings, uh, if you will. Those, of course, would come before the council. The concept was that it is inappropriate for a body to take a capital asset off its books and spend the money on something that will go away. In other words, decreasing, uh, the value of its balance sheet. So that's what we've been doing. As, as these, uh, assets have been sold, those funds have been placed into a, a capital account that is, uh, put aside for building new buildings or, uh, replacing buildings or adding on to buildings. And none of those have, have, uh, come up, uh, through the process with the administration, obviously have not been, uh, introduced to you. A number of those, uh, sales that were just discussed have not closed.
All right, so we don't necessarily have the cash in the bank just yet.
Well, can I just ask the council, as you go about your budgeting process over the next several weeks, you take into account things like the African-American archives, the visitor's center that does not have a location except by the charity of the museum, and Fifteen Place, which needs money. If we're selling city assets, we have money, we ought to put them into things that have need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Uh, Ms. Lambert, did you hear from, I miss, Ms. Merchant? Have you heard?
Uh, she's supposed to come down as soon as they finish.
Well, I saw the woman that is with the pro-late office, she was opening the door just a minute ago. We can, all right, she said she would come down.
Ordinance is held over?
Hang on, Mr. Manzi?
I just wanted to address briefly, uh, some commentary Mr. Hunt made relative to the African-American, uh, archives. That, that particular facility closed because its director retired, uh, and, and cannot retire abruptly. Uh, but I know it's not my position, and I'm gonna be encouraging the administration, uh, and we've had some preliminary talks about how do we move forward with it, how will it be staffed, but I certainly would like to see it continue, continue as an African-American history museum. Uh, the only reason it closed is because its longtime director, Mr. Dolores Dees, retired abruptly right before the beginning of last year's budget cycle.
All right, Ms. Lambert, uh, sorry, I'm so used to saying Ms. Lambert, Ms. Merchant.
It's autopilot.
Yeah.
Ordinance is held over? Eighty-eight zero thirty, ordinance stemming property not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of three oh five Civic Center Drive to Waters and Associates.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over? Zero-nine five-two-two, reallocate monies from District Two Miscellaneous Capital Improvement Fund to Harmon Recreation Center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in- All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21-523, authorized contract amendment with Hutchinson, Moore &amp; Roush for Tomlinville Sidewalks.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21-524, authorized contract with Simplex Grenell for fire sprinkling, sprinkler system repairs, various locations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21-525, authorized contract with Hernandez, demolition and remediation for Mobile Police Department Headquarters Evidence Storage Room Floor Abatement.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21-526, authorized contract with Baskerville Donovan for Ziegler Boulevard, Forestale Drive, intersection, railroad crossing improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
47-527, assent to the vacation of Service Road Right-of-Way at 4210 Halls Mill Road.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
In looking over the paperwork, I noticed that the, um, person representing the applicant is Mr. Doug Anderson, who works for, um, the city as far as the planning and zoning staff. I, I, I want to ask the administration, the mayor's not here, so I know there can't be anything that would publicly be said, but in looking over this application, there are many city staff that have to review it, including the planning office. I do not know who drafted actually the resolution that's before us, but having the same individual that represents citizens and citizen issues and trying to stay, um, you know, above the flow of looking for, um, additional revenue for, um, their, um, law degree, which certainly is allowed, I guess, by the, by the, um, what am I going to say? The contract that the city has with, for Foreman. But I, I'm really uncomfortable with the same individual that acts at all these departments for legal issues to also work in the private sector and be that, that person that sends that application forward. So I, I just wish that the administration would think that through. We had the conflict with the mall and I raised the same thing then. And, um, I know that the city has a lawsuit with the Edge Apartments that Mr. Anderson did represent prior to his, um, being involved with the city government. So he's not able to, um, be the, the lawyer in charge of the decision of the Planning Commission and this council because of his conflict of interest or whatever. And I, I just see why he's able to have this kind of authority with his being involved with the city of Mobile as the Planning Commission attorney. It just is a conflict. Well, I'll ask my attorney from behalf of the city council.
Mr. Rossler?
I'm not sure I have enough information to evaluate it at this point in time. Um, let me just say that I don't have enough information to evaluate.
We don't know who drafted the resolution before us, is it normally?
I don't.
And even if, if he wasn't the one that signed off on it, does, does these planning things that involve planning, long-range planning for the city saying yea or nay on a vacation, it goes through the staff that he oversees as far as legal, um, ideals and standards, correct?
That's what I, no, I don't know that Doug oversees city staff in any capacity.
But this is going through the planning office and isn't his job to oversee legal opinions?
Mr. Anderson is the attorney for the Planning Commission.
And so the excuse will be that it didn't come through the Planning Commission?
I don't know if it's an excuse or not, but the Planning Commission did not weigh in on this resolution or the vacation. And to my knowledge, Mr. Anderson does not supervise any planning staff.
But he deals with traffic engineering and he drills with engineering, the civil engineering aspect of our city government and, and fire department, all of these entities that have to go through the process, he does interact with for zoning and planning on behalf of the, the Planning Commission.
I understand.
Madam President?
Just, just the same as I interact with those departments too on matters that come before you.
I, I would be distressed if I saw your name on something too because of the close relationship that you have with people. And again, it's a standard that the administration, I think, needs to uphold.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to offer that Ms. Rich get with the administration, uh, set up a meeting where she can appropriately address those concerns along with our attorney, uh, so that we might move forward with this agenda.
That's fine.
Yeah, I, I concur.
And, and the thing is, it's very public, so it's not like I'm letting go information that, you know, you're shaking your head or whatever. But again, this is something that I, I think is, is a conflict and is a concern to the citizens of Mobile that I represent, so.
It, it's a concern to the citizens I represent too.
Right.
And I just think it'd be most appropriate you all get together and, and articulate the concerns and therefore we'd be in a position to move forward with this agenda.
Okay, sure.
We, um, may even want to get an attorney general opinion.
It's a good idea.
Nothing wrong with that. Good, we're gonna move on.
Thank you.
Okay, we still need the vote on 47-27.
Yes, you do have to vote.
Okay.
We have a, a motion in a second.
Can we get a second? Um, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, we got one up there.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64-031.
By Council Rules, this ordinance will live for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, numbered 03529 through 27548.
I would suspend the rules for media consideration of ordinance, um, resolutions, 03529 through 27548.
Second.
Resolution 03529 and 03530.
I don't think we voted on the motion to, uh, suspend the rules.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rules suspended. We, we had consent.
Okay.
Consent resolutions, okay. 03529 and 03530, approve appointment of a new director of the Improvement District of the City of Mobile McGowan Park Project Buff Teague and reappoint Brenda Jackson to the Mobile Library Board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37531, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premises-only license for Discount Zone, 158 North Broad Street.
I moved to lay over two weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions 40532, 533, 534, and 535, declare the structures at 410 Driver Street, 1250 Arlington Street, 1350A St. Stevens Road, and 1350B St. Stevens Road, public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
Uh, just 40-533, just noted that that is District Three besides District Two. Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
58536, authorize removal of weeds, Group 1566.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
6537, support adoption of a Childcare Safety Act.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. Um, I thank the other supporters of this sponsors, Gregory and Dave's, in joining me and hope that the council in its entirety will also support this effort. And this is to, um, inform members of our State House, both the Senate and, and the Rep, House of Representatives, that they need to act on the law that would require that all, um, types of, uh, childcare facilities have to go through vetting on their staff. This is something that, um, rang my phone exponentially because of the incident, the child was in a daycare that is in the district that I represent. And we're all shaken and perturbed by the loss of that child. Again, this is something that, um, is bigger than it appears because it is something that would make a difference perhaps. Uh, nobody will know for sure, but a lot of schools already vet their staff to make sure that, um, they are, um, going to not have a criminal background history. A lot of schools either pu, well, public for sure, it's a requirement, and private, many even, uh, non-denominational and religious facilities do this on their own without requiring it. This would be a standard that the state would set. They actually are the entity that can oversee it. The city, um, I don't believe that church preschools even get business license, that might be an avenue for the city to pursue, but this is the way to do it because of the staff that DHR has and we speak to that in the resolution. So I urge my council members to join in this effort to inform the State House that in the next cycle that they take this up and it happens so that parents know that there is a control in place. And, um, so I thank you for your support and I'm sure your phones rang like mine did as well when we learned that these are systems that do not require this unless the state mandates it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Mr. Williams?
I, um, I've just, um, offer a word of, um, reservation and caution. Um, I don't want the, um, the city of Mobile, any resident thereof or anybody in our surrounding area to have, um, any thought that we might have control over this type of procedure. This, um, this is a letter going to the state. It is nothing more than this body that represents the, the people of Mobile asking the folks that represent Mobile at our State House to act promptly and to act in accordance with what our governor has said that she supports, and that is licensing of personnel that are working with our children regardless of what type of facility that is. So this, this does not change anything. It simply sends our voice to the State House and I will do so personally to each one of our representatives as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else?
Well, it's.
Mrs. Rich, go ahead then.
Yeah, just briefly. I know that our representatives were supportive of this, so, um, and, and I thank them for that and I would not want the message to get out that the Mobile County delegation, either Senator or Representative, was in opposition. The opposition was not coming from our smart legislators.
All right, Mr. Dave's?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to pick up and expand a little bit on something, uh, Mr. Williams, uh, spoke about, and that is, that is what we are doing here today. When this issue first came up, uh, I was concerned that our ability to act was circumscribed by, uh, state legislation and I talked to our attorney, Mr. Rossler, about the issue and, and the fact of the matter is that, uh, that, the, the, the state of Alabama has entered into the regulation of childcare facilities and that preempts any ability we have to separately regulate these facilities, which is why we are doing what we're doing today, which is ask the legislative delegation to take action because we can't take action to solve this problem. All we can do is do what we're going to do today and ask the legislative, uh, delegation to take action on this issue. And it, it, uh, you know, it points up a larger issue, uh, is that often, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, contacted by citizens, uh, to ask the city to take action in certain respects. And, uh, the fact of the matter is that on a lot of things, uh, the city doesn't have the ability to act. We live in a state in which, uh, a lot of power is concentrated in Montgomery and not very much, uh, power is delegated out by, uh, by the, by the folks in Montgomery to the municipalities. And so there are many, many issues in which, uh, we might act that we're forbidden from acting because we've been preempted, uh, by the state legislature. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dave's. Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam President, I suggest that we, uh, come back to the next, uh, resolution that's declaring the results after the canvassing and we could proceed with the, uh, we've been in touch with Lisa and they're not quite ready yet.
So just keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
CIP resolutions being introduced, numbered 13538 through 21539.
I would suspend the rules for media consideration on resolution 21539 and 538 will lay over for one week by Council Rules.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson, I didn't hear you. Did you move for immediate consent of all, all of them?
Just one.
No, just one. We're going, we're going to consider 21539 and lay over 538.
All the rest? Okay. 21539, unauthorized contract with BPM Construction for Woodcock School break room upgrades.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President?
Mr. Manzi?
Uh, this is an effort, this is the T-SAC building. Uh, it was formerly, uh, the Woodcock Elementary School is utilized now, uh, by several senior citizen groups and other groups, uh, there in District Two. And, uh, they came about eight or nine months ago asking that a break room be redesigned and appropriately outfitted so that they could prepare meals. Uh, and I want to thank, um, Ms. Kim Harden and, uh, everyone associated with her department that worked hard to get the design just right, uh, so that they will have a, uh, state-of-the-art facility there, uh, to prepare meals for not only, uh, the senior citizen groups, uh, the domino players that come on Saturdays. Uh, all of them were excited about, uh, this upgrade and I'm happy to see it, uh, finally hit the council agenda.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced, 13540 through 545.
These resolutions will lay over for one week by Council Rules.
Call for public hearings. 41-546, call for public hearing to rezone property at 3915 and 3921 Cottage Hill Road from B1 and B2 to LB2. And 41-547, call for public hearing to rezone property at 402 St. Anthony Street from SDWH and T5.1 to SDWH.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Announcements? All right, uh, I will start with, uh, Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. I have quiet. I'm good.
Oh, no announcements? All right. Mr. Small?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, next, Saturday, September the ninth, um, the Port City Second Liner, um, in my office, uh, we will be collecting, um, bottles of water, deodorant, soap and, um, lotion and towels, uh, for the victims of, uh, Houston, Texas. Uh, we will be collecting at Last Stadium, uh, starting at the time from at 11:00 to 8:00 p.m. Uh, if you'd like to drop off any items before then, you're more than welcome to drop them off at the, uh, Mobile Area Martyrial Association Den and Eric's, um, Five Star Barber Shop, which is located on University Boulevard and also the Credit Store on Knollwood Drive, inviting in the citizens, especially citizens of District Three. If you'd like to contribute to this, word to call, please, uh, come by Saturday, uh, September the ninth, 2017, from 11:00 to 8:00 p.m. Where we are collecting several items such as water, deodorant, soap, um, towels, lotions, uh, diapers and other, um, tartar trees. Uh, also next week, I will be announcing several important meetings that will be coming up in District Three and also the Yard of the Month. And remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Williams?
No, thanks, Madam President.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, um, announce that on this Thursday, I will be holding my Midtown Community Meet at the Ashram Place United Methodist Church. This meeting will start at 6:00 p.m. And we're going to talk about all the good things that's happening up there. We're going to talk about the CIP program and we're going to talk about, uh, the brochure that I mailed out to each resident, uh, this past week. Uh, I mailed out a res, um, brochure to every resident in District One and it has to do with them submitting to me. issues and prioritize them and come up with a District One capital improvement plan, and I'm gonna submit that plan to my extension. All of this is based, based on the assumption that the council will vote to, contingency to, to extend the penny beyond sunset. If we extend the penny beyond sunset, then we would have money for twenty nineteen and beyond to keep the capital improvement program going. I wanna be ready at the buzzer. If we, hopefully we will extend the penny, I wanna be ready to submit my comprehensive program for District One. In order to do that, I need the input of all of the citizens in District One and to formulate that program. The program will be, will be based on what the citizens say that they want me to do, not what I wanted, not what I want done. It's gonna be citizen-driven, and we're gonna listen to everybody, but we, I can say upfront that we have over a hundred million dollars worth of capital needs, that we would get approximately three million per year. We can't address all issues, but we're gonna try to address the most important issues, and those issues will be determined by the citizens based on what they submit to me. So I'm gonna ask all citizens to please get your response back to us. You've got a whole month to do that, get that back to us, and then we'll come back, and we will get back with each community to let you know what you decided was most important, what are most important projects, and we're going straight down that road. Everybody would not be happy, but I'm following what the majority of the citizens say that they want us to do. So we'll be going over that on Thursday night, and we're gonna have people there to talk about, to talk about publics, several major drainage projects, sidewalks coming, it's a bunch of lots of good things that's coming that we will be talking about, too. Mainly, I want everybody to know that I'll be coming to the Ashram Place United Methodist Church Thursday night at six o'clock. And also, Madam President, I would inform that Comcast will start airing our program on Fridays at four, at four P.M. So they're gonna change the date and time that they're gonna air our program. It's gonna be four P.M. on Friday, from what I understand.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dave. Mr. Manzey?
Yes, Madam President, I just wanna start my announcements by certainly expressing my prayers and well wishes and thoughts to everyone impacted by this Hurricane Harvey and the flooding associated with this aftermath. I don't know of any city that's prepared so from a drainage perspective that could handle the hundreds of millions of gallons, trillions of gallons of water that has just engulfed that area. And my prayers go out to those elected officials. I know the mayor there, he's been under some fire, whether he should have evacuated, whether he should not, you know, you don't know until you sit in these positions and have to make certain decisions, and so my prayers go out to him and that whole staff, and I'm hopeful that, that everyone that's been impacted by that will be made whole at some point. It just leads to some of the issues that we're working on as it relates to drainage and, and infrastructure. We have a lot of things that need to be done here in the city of Mobile, so I certainly will be in support of continuing our penny sales tax. I look forward to having that discussion with the rest of my colleagues as to how do we do it and how do we program it for this next renewal, but it's clear that we have a lot of issues to work on, a lot of them in District Two. I think there's more capital improvement needs in District Two. If you look at the backlog than, than in the other district, a lot of that is due to, well, that's according to the backlog. Now, if the backlog's wrong, then I'm wrong, but according to the backlog, there's more in District Two than in other districts. So, but there's work to be done all over. I don't deny that, and we're working within the confines of, of the resources that we have to address all of those issues. And I'm gonna be following a similar path. This won't be the Levon Manzay Plan as we move forward with the next four years. We wanna hear from citizens, so you'll also be receiving something from my office shortly asking for your input. We'll follow that up with community meetings to make certain that what we do is reflective of the priorities of the residents in District Two. Great time to be here in the city of Mobile, and my thoughts and prayers again go out to everyone impacted by this hurricane, and we know how it feels because we've been through it with Katrina and Danny and, and any other number of hurricanes, and so I'm hopeful that we will support efforts like what's going on with the Port City Second Liner, with support efforts that have been announced. I've had citizens write me today saying, well, can you outline, you know, where can we help? And I'll try to get with Marion Steinfels to put something together to post. I wanna close by acknowledging the death of a great Mobilean that I did not know had passed until Sunday, Dr. Dorothy Bivins. Dr. Dorothy Bivins passed about three weeks ago. Longtime educator, longtime community activist, active in, I believe, the neighborhood organized workers. Dr. Bivins made a difference in this community, and I am saddened that I was not made aware of her passing. I know her daughter real well, Sean Bivins, I know her niece real well, and she contacted me via Facebook, upset that this city did not acknowledge the passing of her aunt. Well, we can acknowledge what we don't know, and so we, I want to just say on behalf of, I knew Dr. Bivins, worked with Dr. Bivins. Dr. Bivins was a strong supporter of, of every effort that I've made for elective office, so I'm regretting that we did not acknowledge her passing, we did not know she passed. But she was some quality Mobilean, and this city was made better by her participation. I know my community, our communities have been made, made better by all that she did and tried to do in every aspect of life here in the city of Mobile, and so I just want to publicly acknowledge her passing and express to her family our collective sorrow and our collective well wishes and our prayers for you as you go through your, your months and weeks and years of bereavement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dave.
Yes, ma'am, I, I was remiss in not mentioning the folks out in Texas, and I think both the governmental officials and the citizens deserve to be commended. The governmental officials have done, as far as I can tell, a marvelous job in the face of just overwhelming challenges. There's, you know, we have our drainage issues in this city, and a lot of them are caused by the fact that we're three hundred years old and we went years and years and years without addressing them, and the people who moved the city down from, from the bluff down here and planted it in a, in a swamp didn't do us any favors three hundred years ago. We've got our challenges, but the fact of the matter is that no municipal system in the world can build a drainage system for a thousand-year flood. You just, you, you can't do it, you're not gonna do it, and that's what these folks are facing, and they've done a, they've done a marvelous job, I think, handling it and responding to it. And the citizens, the citizens, the way the people out there have banded together, the way neighborhoods have banded together, the way people have used their own trucks, used their own boats, used their own cars to rescue folks and take them to safety is just absolutely unbelievable. And I think coming at this time in our country's history, it's been really a delightful thing to witness these people enduring this great adversity together, but everybody pitching in to work and make it better for those who are most affected by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to wrap things up, this afternoon, we have a couple of committee meetings at two o'clock, we have public services, then at three o'clock, finance, and of course, those are both open to the public. On Saturday, I was very pleased to be able to participate in the Friends of the Internationals. It was a new student banquet over at University of South Alabama, and a lot of the current students were there, and they welcomed the new students who are just starting at the university this year. It was a great time, enjoyed it immensely. It was really kind of fun because several of the athletic teams were there, and predominantly these teams, the tennis, both men's and women's, and soccer are made up of international students. So it was a lot of fun to meet these students and to participate, and Jim Mather has left, but this is his ministry. He and his wife have been doing this for a number of years, and they provide a family for these international students who come to Mobile and don't know a soul, but they come to school and they are good students, and a lot of them are recruited to come here, but again, they come and don't know anybody, don't have any families, and this Friends of International provides them that family. So anyway, really enjoyed it, a great meal, we had a lot of interesting foods, but one of the most popular was the fried chicken. So I wanted to thank Jim for inviting me and my, my husband to attend. Any other announcements? I guess we need to just recess. Any idea how much longer we're gonna be?
I sent a text message.
Can we eat lunch and come back?
Can we go eat lunch and come back?
Sure.
Well, find out how, how far along she is, because I don't wanna pass her on the elevator. I see Ms. Anton wants to fill them. I'm turning off the microphone.
Yeah.
Sure, I was just thinking, I'd love to wait with y'all, but like Councilman Dave's, I'm gonna grab some lunch. Listen, y'all, for Ole Miss this Saturday at six thirty, so, first win. And next Friday, we'll be back with Oklahoma State's in District Two. How do ESPN, I'm sure, yeah, so maybe ESPN will be here in Mobile as well for the Oklahoma State game on Saturday, I believe. I don't know which one, one of them, so get ready for some crowded in District So, we're expecting the full house.
Nobody's answering any phones, so.
Yeah, seven, seven P.M.
Hope there's no problem.
All right. You're welcome. I'll see y'all later, good luck to you. And your newest resident of District Six. I was temporarily housed up in District Four. I moved back into county, so, yeah, thank you, I'll see y'all later.
I wanna acknowledge Pastor West. Pastor West pastors the Rehoboth Missionary Baptist Church on Center Street in District Two, and I believe two days out of the week, four, three days out of the week, they give food out to the homeless and to the needy, and I just wanna publicly thank you for all of your outreach and keep up the good work. God bless you. Yes, sir.
At five points, by the hospital, right, it's, 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 yeah, it's a, you know what it's right is?
All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and recess, so, motion on the floor to recess, is there a second?
Motion, so moved.
All right, discussion, all in favor of recessing? All right, we are recessed?
All right, Ms. Larry. Okay, you were talking about the legislature and the child stuff, Mrs. Lady on the school board, she have already put something forward to have all church licensed, Ms. Ella Bell on the school board of the state school board to have.